This time we'll ask our clerk to call the role for a quorum, please.
Mr. Blakemore.
President.
Mr. Askew.
Here.
Chairman Whitfield.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Stoltz.
President. All right, thank you. Everyone's here tonight on the board. We do have our minutes that were prepared from our June 9 meeting that has been prepared by our clerk. Is there any questions or any issues with those minutes?
Hey Chairman, you skipped one.
Approve the agenda.
Oh, I am so sorry. You're right. Thank you. Approval of the agenda. There's been an agenda prepared. It's been posted on our website and Facebook page. Is there any modifications to the agenda tonight? Thank you for that. All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. But Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. All right, thank you for that. Keep me on track there. Okay, now our minutes from June 9th has been prepared and was presented in the packet and posted online. Any questions or concerns of those minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the prior meeting?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second. But Commissioner Hart, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Okay, we do have a couple of public hearing items tonight. The first one is Andy Brown requests for partial rezone from A1 to R1 for property located at 456 McIntyre Road, Rock Springs, Georgia, 30739. Tax map impartial number 0-356-002. And the first public hearing had been held at the Planning Commission last Thursday on June the 16th. So is anyone here that wants to speak in opposition of this request? Any opposition? Okay, hearing no one. Does anyone want to speak in favor of this, or if the applicant has the right to speak, if they would like? Anyone wants to speak? Okay, no one's here to speak on this one, so we'll move to our next one. Next one we have is, and I don't want to butcher these names, somebody may have to help me here. Kayden and Cameron Schiff request three conditional use variances, three tiny homes located at 2137 Dunwoodie Road, LaFayette, Georgia, 30728. Tax map impartial 0-523-044C. This one also had its first hearing last Thursday, June the 16th, at the Planning Commission. Anyone here to speak in opposition of this request? Hearing none, anyone that would like to speak on behalf or in favor of this request, or the applicant that would like to speak? Okay, hearing none, we'll continue. Okay, we'll next go to our public comments. This is where we allow anyone that would like to come and address the board, up to five minutes, to come to the podium. They just need to speak their name and to address the board, anyone that'd like to speak tonight. Yes, sir, please come up. Please state your name for the record, sir.
Uh, Jim Pope. Let me get my clock running here, so I can keep up with it. Hey, Mark, I ran out of time last meeting.
Yes, sir.
And I got some additional questions. Now, this attorney y'all had over here on May the 26th, he gave y'all a copy of this presentation, didn't he?
Yes, sir.
Okay. He is justifying a county manager by a law passed in 1974 and last modified in 1992, and it is 36-5-22. That's OCGA.
That's right.
Okay. Now, in the resolution he's making as an example for you, he's got, whereas OCGA 36522 authorizes the governing authority of any county to create the position of county manager. Now, I want to get back to the law creating this board form of government for you. Now, in the very first paragraph of it, it has an act, and it lists the several different things, but one of them is to repeal conflicting laws. And then, under Section 10, it states, "The chairperson shall minister the affairs and day-to-day business of the county and preside over the meeting of the board." And then, the very last paragraph in this law, it states, "All laws and parts of laws in conflict with this act are repealed." Now, this was passed, I think, in 2017. How is this law, old law that the attorney is quoting, why is it not being repealed by this county law of 2017?
Mr. Pope, I'm not an attorney, and I can't answer that question. All I can answer, and you've given me good validity there, is there is an OCG, there is a law existing today that was existing before we ever went to our form. Like you said, it was done by the Assembly back in the 70s or whatever. I didn't know that. That's good information. But it's a law that's on the books, and I don't know why it's not repealed, and I don't know that it can be repealed. That would be legislation, I think, that would probably do that. But if our attorney would like to speak back to for us, because I'm not an attorney, so I'll refer that to our attorney.
Okay.
Mr. Pope, what that is called a repealer provision, repealing any conflicting laws. But repealer only applies, in this case, to county ordinances. The county does not have the authority to repeal existing state law. So, for example, crazy example, okay? The state has law against driving under the influence. If for some crazy reason Walker County said, "We don't want that law. We don't care if people drive while intoxicated." The county does not have the authority, the legal authority, to repeal an existing state law. State law controls over local law, and I understand the confusion, and you've raised a good question, but that's the answer. It's, we're only repealing conflicting county law or our county ordinances, sir.
Mm-hmm. But the legislature did pass this with Governor, Secretary of State signing our local law, our law establishing the board here.
Yes, sir, that is correct, but, and you're right, it went through the legislative process at the state level. However, the repealer only affects any county ordinances, just like the creation, that law dealt with the creation of Walker County Board of Commissioners. So the only thing that can be repealed is anything that applies to that particular county, that, in this case, Walker County. So I know that that's confusing, but it is a legitimate, that is legitimate law, yes, sir.
So David, would a good example of that be the previous enabling act that formed the sole commissioner government?
Right. That might be an easier and better example, Mr. Pope. So, previous to this, we had an enabling act, and our enabling act goes back, gosh, I didn't bring my documentation with me.
1939 was the last check.
1939. At one point, we were a five-person Board of Commissioners, then we went to a one-person sole commissioner, and now we have, the voters chose to return to a five-person board. So that is what that is repealing, is that, yes, it is state-approved, but it really only references county ordinances or laws that are in conflict with what they're now passing, or was passed in 2017.
My time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Good question.
Okay, anyone else that would like to speak tonight? Yes, ma'am.
I hope somebody else needs to go with him.
You want to come on up?
Sure.
Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Laura Alsland. Thank you for this opportunity. I hope that you all don't take my questions the wrong way, but I do have a few questions and that I'd like cleared up. But I had come to the understanding that Mr. Whitfield, you had planned or had discussed possibly going to work for ACCG after your time here at the county. Is that true?
It's something that I have talked about as a possibility.
Okay.
Because they're always looking for people with governmental experience to...
Sure. And, yes, I've read about that. So, here's my question, because what concerns me a little bit is I have been seeing some benefits shifting over to ACCG. So I kind of felt like that could potentially be a conflict of interest, and especially, for example, if we look at the pension plan that you all, I don't know if that's squashed or not, but that's an example that I can think of. But that, you all did not get any other bids on that initially, until people started raising, just getting upset by it. And so then I saw some hypotheticals coming through in January on that. So I just kind of feel like it could be a conflict of interest if we don't see additional bidders up. And I don't know the process, but I think that that would be good for our county to have economically, and I think it would just be better for everyone not to kind of shift everything to ACCG. But are we considering ACCG still for the pension?
It is still a possibility.
Okay.
That has still been worked on. But changing to ACCG, the initial calculations was over a $200,000 a year savings.
Yes, I'm familiar with that. Here's the difference, though. With this change, it looks like we got a letter February the 25th of 2022. So this year, it says, "When you come over to ACCG Plan, you will get a benefit of using an investment return of 7 percent. This will yield immediate savings to the plan to help pay down the unfunded liability. Currently, your assets are 97 percent fixed income," which is completely opposite of the investment strategy. So here's the thing. I know that there is a savings. You all probably should have been out of the fixed income years ago. But now, look at where we are in the market. The S&amp;P 500, as of last year, or last week, was down 22 percent. The Dow down nearly 17 percent. The Russell was down 25 percent, and the Nasdaq down 30 percent. How can this statement be true with the yield immediate savings to the plan to help pay down unfunded liability? In the fixed account, there is a cost, but when we're talking about this type of disparity, that could mean much more than what the cost is currently. I do think that it probably should be revised. If you all would have done this in December, then we can see that the investments would have pulled back quite strongly. And so I do have concern there. So, on another note, I did also notice that, I know that you're a chair with ACCG, and they are probably a very good educator to all of you. Do we pay some sort of fee to them for this type of education, like a do, like dues?
There is annual membership dues that all 159 counties do pay, and it's based off of the size of your population.
So I think that that's fair, because they are great educators, of course. But can you see how this looks like we're shifting a whole lot to them? They're also getting the benefit of having you having a 404 telephone number. I don't know who's calling that telephone.
I don't have a 404 telephone.
I've seen it online as section...
You say, "I'm a chair, I'm a chair here." Is that what you're referring to?
So, well, in one of these ACCG documents, it says, "You're in the policy committee chairs and vice chairs." It says Walker County Chairman, Chair, General County Government, and are you on the committee?
Last session, I was a chair of a subcommittee or policy.
Yes, yes, that's what this is. It says policy.
And I'm no longer, no longer the chair nor the vice chair of the policy.
So you do not get, you don't have the 404 number any longer?
No, I've never had a 404.
Okay, there is one online, so that could be an error.
That's probably their home office, but I don't have an office there. I don't get any compensation from there.
I know you did not. I was not suggesting you did. I know that you didn't. I was just wondering, because I know a lot of people are concerned about, you know, your time management, and I wondered if maybe ACCG was taking up some of that, you know, because we are seeing a lot from ACCG.
Well, what that involved is a policy council for legislation that affects our county.
Yes.
And what we needed to work on as a state-county organization to combat unfunded regulations that would affect our taxpayers here at home.
Perfect. Well, so I know my time is up, but I do want you all to go back to this ACCG and then ask them, what would the liability look like should we finish the year based on a negative return, say the 22 percent, or ask them where they are this year. What would that look like for us as a county? Because the 7 percent that they have added here is much higher than I've seen. I've usually seen 4 to 5 percent, and I think that that's prudent. As you know, on millions of dollars, 1 percent is a huge dollar amount. So I would like for you all to at least go back to them and ask them that, and then compare that to your current Lincoln policy, and look at where they had recommended you all go into. I think they had more fixed income likely. Fixed income was down as well. I think it would be wise to compare the two, and then see what kind of real savings that you have. Thank you.
Thank you for that information, officer. Very much.
I'm Janice Williams. I have a question first. I hope I can get a quick answer. Is it correct that the board, the district commissioners, the board writes policy and procedure?
Yes, sir.
That's correct. Okay. I received an email from what said the shelter team, but it was copied to Shannon Whitfield, and in that, I was issued a policy as a citizen. I have a concern with that, because the board writes policy and procedure for county operations, and I don't understand why any county employee would write a policy and procedure for a citizen. And that policy and procedure was that if I needed to contact the animal shelter, that my point of contact was my district representative, and I needed to go through him, and he would contact them. So I just want to clarify for you, and certainly for the shelter team, you don't write policy and procedure, and you don't write it for citizens. And I pay taxes. I have an organization that can benefit our shelter in spay and neuter, and there is no reason, other than a personal reason, to say that any citizen cannot communicate with part of the county government that we're paying for. You all are in service to us. We elect you. You hire or appoint, but it's all service to our county. So I would like to clarify that, because if I need to get a hold of a department in our county, I expect to be able to do it. These Board of Commissioners, the district commissioners, are part-time. Their plates are extremely full, and they don't have time to be the secretary for the animal shelter. That citizens would need to go through them, then they'll contact the shelter. It's inappropriate. My next issue that I want to address is what hit the newspaper about the new budget for animal services. Chairman Whitfield, you are the numbers guy, and this proposed budget of $921,000, you know that that's just ridiculous. That's ridiculous. Forsyth County has a population of 240,000 people, four times the size of us. They have six animal control officers and one working supervisor that also goes on call. They're on call seven days a week, 24/7. Their shelter has 22 employees. They're going to be adding four next year. They house 200 cats, 100 dogs, have an extra kennel space off-site for any overflow. They take in well over 2,000 animals a year. They provide vet care for all of their animals and spay and neuter, and their budget is just over $850,000. We're 69,000 people in this county, and you are going to propose almost a million dollars for our animal services. I see this two ways. It is very, very clear that you don't want an animal services director to be over animal control and the shelter. You've made that clear, and you've made that clear to the other board members.
That is incorrect.
No, you fought it. You have fought it.
That is incorrect.
You agreed that you're going to do it, but you fought it first. And then, the interim is only over animal control, not over the shelter, so they continue to report just directly to you. But what I'm saying is, and if you all object, please raise your hands. I don't know any, aside from Mr. Hart, because I haven't spoken with you, who approves $921,000 for this. And to take it to the media and have it released before you even told the other board members that it was going to the press, that's really inappropriate, because they're the ones that got all the phone calls today and took the heat about it, saying, "What is going on?" And at least one of them didn't even know it had gone to the paper. How can you justify almost a million dollars for a county our size for animal services?
When it was released, was here in public back, I think it was in March. That was not anything that was new, and it was also brought up about three meetings ago.
But Joe Leguiz went to the paper with it yesterday, or the day before that. So it just came out in the paper.
I don't have any knowledge of that.
Okay. Well, it just came out in the paper, and how can you justify $921,000 for our animal services?
It was laid out in detail, so you just...
No, I saw, Shannon, you're the numbers guy. How can you possibly, and looking at other counties in our state who are four times the size of us and do way more than we do for over $100,000 less a year, how can you, as the numbers guy, make that?
That was the budget estimates that I'd come up with to provide that seven-day-a-week service.
Did you contact any other counties to see how they do it?
I looked at what our internal costs were, and extrapolated that out of what it would take to provide a 365-day-a-week, or 365-year service.
So I think, I think that's part of the problem is, you're not willing to learn. You don't let other employees get training, particularly in the animal field. You haven't yet. You've been here for five years, and they haven't had any training. But it seems to me, if you're going to take on this and ask taxpayers to pay almost a million dollars, you would consult with other counties who are doing it successfully, that are able to do it less, and find out why, instead of staying in your bubble of, "This is how I'm going to do it, and this is what ours say." We got a whole state with 159 counties, and I can tell you, no comparable county to our size is looking for almost a million dollars. There are ways to do it more efficiently and effectively. And I don't know if this number was just to outrage the public, so that everybody will say, "No, don't do it. Don't get the new animal services director, and don't make the changes that we need." I don't know, but I think you're better at numbers than that. And I think you should get with some other counties to find out how to do it more effectively.
Okay, thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to speak? Yes, sir, right here in the gray shirts, sir.
My name's Nathan England. I was here a couple of meetings ago at the initial presentation for the county manager. So one thing is, I've noticed in the minutes of last meeting, there were still more comments about that particular issue. I watched the Government Hour on the Facebook page that you host. There was a call-in about it. So I, I don't know, you guys seemed to open up a pretty big can of worms with that whole issue. And I only mention it because I've got another comment about it. And my only comment about it is, you know, you guys are elected officials, and I don't know if you guys have resolved the differences that you have with the chair or with one another, or how the whole process is working or not, but it seems to make more sense to me. Your district, you know, people, representatives, why not run against and run for the chair spot in opposition to what you think the problems are with the current chair? You may have more support than you know, and it wouldn't cost taxpayers over $130,000. Nothing against you, just a suggestion before we go spending more taxpayer money. Anybody can run. You guys have experience. You know, a lot of us apparently follow local politics, so, you know, if you have a better platform and a better way of doing it, that's what I would suggest. Get out and run against the people that you don't think are doing the job as well as they could be. So I can be convinced, right? Another thing, I meant to start with this, because I like to start with something, you know, pleasant. I did come out to the Honeybee Festival and, you know, brought my kids out. We had a great time. So I wanted to kind of make sure that everybody here knew that, you know, that was a really good experience, and we had a whole morning full of fun. And the fact that it was free was great. We went to Chick and Margaret for Down Home Days, and were expected to pay $15 for the whole day for bounce houses that we paid nothing for up here, so that was great. So, a clerical thing, this thing could use page numbers. Just saying. I know that you had referred to a couple of pages last meeting that I attended, and people couldn't find them, because they're not numbered. So that might be something to think about, just having page numbers on your agendas. I used to run a faculty senate, and so I'm pretty familiar with putting together agendas, and, you know, so I noticed those kinds of things. Another thing, especially in the economy, and I got a wife right home right now that doesn't feel that great. I didn't really want to leave, but, you know, I can't stand here, as I did last meeting, and say, "People need to be more involved," and then not show up. But one thing, I didn't know if you maybe considered, especially in this economy with gas prices being what they are, you know, is there a way to set up a mechanism by which we could teleconference our questions in our public comment, you know, some sort of Skype, or, you know, we went through two years of this pandemic, and that was kind of standard practice to do in business for everybody for a long time, was teleconferencing. And so maybe that would be something to consider. People that can't make it out, can't afford the gas to make it out here, you know, don't want to leave, you know, a wife that doesn't feel that great, or a husband, or kids, you know, maybe we could, you could look at something like that, to where we could use that kind of mechanism to make public comment from our own homes. Because I know a lot of people watch, you know, on Facebook, and, you know, but they don't have the ability to comment. So, just something to think about. Other, the last two things I have probably aren't real popular, and seem like bellyacheing, and maybe very well might be. But I did talk about taxes last time I was here, and, you know, I got two small kids. They're not in public schools. I don't plan for them to be in public schools. My tax bill, over 50 percent of that tax bill is going to public schools that I don't use, don't intend to use. It's near 60 percent that I have to pay for a system that, you know, I'm not even going to benefit from. So maybe if they have a gym over there, I could go over and, you know, use it, since I'm paying for it. But that's just something in my back pocket. And another thing, the last thing I have, it's probably not popular with any public official or board official. You know, we talk a lot about transparency, especially politicians love to talk about transparency. I think one of the ways that, you know, transparency could definitely be exhibited is by not even using executive session. Nobody knows what goes on in executive session. Who knows? You guys know, and that's it. There's no, are there minutes from executive session? Because there typically aren't. Because there typically aren't. If there are, they're not published probably. Is that correct?
There is, but they are not published at all.
Right. So it seems to me, and I know that's not popular with any board, with any Chair of any board, with any politician, you know, because I understand it's a mechanism that, you know, people on boards really like. But it seems to me that if transparency is really important, you know, maybe that's something that should be used only in the most, you know, appropriate, you know, manner, as opposed to just kind of being the standard for hashing things out behind closed doors. And another thing, and I know my time is...
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Oh, I know, it'll take just one second. I know that you're my representative and I didn't get a chance to say it last time. And anybody up here that is also in the same position, I'd like to just say thank you for your service.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to speak? Yes, sir, in the very back in the black shirt. I'm sorry, I'll get to you next, the black shirt behind you. We'll get you next.
Ladies and gentlemen, Michael Keith is my name. Just want to say hello, Mr. Hart. Nice to finally get to meet you. And I just want to start real quick with the county manager. I understand that you guys, it was just an advisory thing. I watched that on YouTube, really appreciate him back there. I watch most of these meetings on YouTube the next day while I'm at work, skating on work. If I believe it was Mr. Pope, if his arguments is persistent and persuasive as they been, have not swayed you, I just wanted to let you know, I have not been swayed by the arguments thus far, for whatever that's worth. I think you guys are good the way that you are. And at least, for the time being, I think it's worth giving it a shot before, you know, going down that kind of road. It would be hard to come back out of. Right? Moving on from there, I did want to touch on the topic of taxes for just a second, but you know what, I'm not going to be mad at you. So, I opened my tax bill and I wasn't fist pumping or anything, but I did speak with Mr. Hart. And it's good that I did because he educated me on it, right? And then I watched a meeting where the Tax Commissioner kind of spoke. And I'm still looking, even today, I went back and I looked at the Facebook page, which I'm sure he has no end of comic relief on there because people are mad. They are upset. And I can't imagine what the Tax Assessor's Office telephone number has endured since people have opened up their tax bills. And to the gentleman that just spoke, I will tell you, there was a school board meeting this past Monday. And something you should know is that the school board meetings aren't like here, where I can just show up, raise my hand, come up here and talk for five minutes about whatever I want to, and you guys will respond. If I ask you a question, you'll respond. And I'm going to tell you, school board ain't like that. They're nice people and I'm not trying to denigrate them, but the policies that they have in place are far more strict. So if you're looking for transparency, I can tell you, you should probably show up. I don't think that they're bad people, to be honest with you. I don't think that they may have realized, especially the kind of fallout. Like I told Mr. Hart when I opened up my tax bill, you want to know why TSP didn't pass? Well, I voted no. I voted no because I looked at my tax bill and I said, "Well, good grief, I just voted to put five people in there and the first thing they did was raise my taxes and now you want more money too?" I said, "There's no way you're going to get more money out of me now." It was unfortunate that I didn't speak to you beforehand because I'd have voted yes. You know, and I don't know that the school board understood that, well, that's the kind of response people are going to have when they see that. And I did inform them of that. And I don't think that, you know, I think their intentions are good, but you may not consider the fallout of your action, or in this case, your inaction. And I can tell you that I've been in communication with Mr. Rains, Superintendent, and Ms. Phyllis, one of the posts, she's one of the board members, very nice people. And they're having a budget meeting on June the 30th. I don't know if that's public or not, but I intend to find out and if it is, I'm going to go again because it's important. What you guys, I think, should do, and I don't know how you can do it, I don't have the answer, but clearly people are still mad at you. Right? And I get it. I mean, I've listened to you guys speak, I've listened to the, not everybody watches YouTube and clearly not everybody's here. And I don't know how you get the word out. I mean, I've seen even on the Facebook post that linked to the Tax Assessor saying, "I had no choice." And in the same meeting, you guys said that you lowered the mileage rate, look at the comment section. I mean, I invite you to just go read that comment section. It is rough. It's like an episode of WWF in that. It's hard. So I would encourage you to find a way, to talk to people and let them know that, you don't have to point fingers. Like I said, I'm not looking at this without trying to give them the benefit of the doubt, you know, but it won't change until those elected officials feel the pressure that you're feeling. Right? That's how it's changed. That's all I got on that one. Yep, and the public schools and the policy there. The only other thing is, I like the comment that he made about being able to comment remotely. I've got four teenagers, well, three teenagers, a wife and a toddler, right? So we didn't learn the first three times. They're all in karate and they go to karate and I'm stuck at home with a baby. And it is fine because when you've got three teenagers, you appreciate the infant like you didn't used to the first time around. So we have fun, but I can't always be here, yeah. And if I can, if I can get him sitting down and feeding him some Cheerios while he's watching a cartoon, I would be able to comment. I can tell you, YouTube, if you're streaming on YouTube and things like that, you know, the comments are always on YouTube videos now, which is great, they should be, you can't stifle that. And he's real good about that, I know that he is. You can comment on streams, that YouTube even has Super Chats, ain't nobody going to donate to you, but it would be fun if they did, right? You could turn those on, people would be able to comment. I know my time's expired, gentlemen, I appreciate your time and I appreciate your service here. And Mr. Hart, I really appreciate you taking my telephone call, sir. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you for your comment, guys. Yes, sir, the blue shirt.
Hey, good evening. Justin Young. I'm all here for one thing. I noticed on the minutes of the day, there's a proposal on Dunn Woody Road to rezone some agricultural property to like a tiny home community. And I seen the sign on the road the other day, and I live on that road and it's an agricultural community. And I believe that the county made that agricultural to protect and promote agriculture use in Walker County. And I can sympathize if somebody needing like lower income housing, but I believe there's other areas in the county or tri-county area that can supply that type of a lower income housing or smaller housing. So I just want to come and voice my opinion that I'm opposed to the rezoning of that. Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Anyone else that'd like to speak?
Hey, good afternoon. Name's Melvin Moody. Can I make a comment about the animal shelter? Real quick, so, this is my fourth time attending one of these, you know, public meetings and is it with Perry's Promise? Is that the organization?
I am Perry's Promise, yeah, I was speaking for myself, not for you.
Okay, I got you. I mean, I don't, you know, just observation. You know, there's, there seems to be some sort of differences between the organizations not working with one another. You know, I don't know enough to tell you why that's happening or not. I would just understand. I would just, just observation, I would just have some self-awareness of how you're speaking to people. Here to talk about East Warren Road. So I was here last week and I think I took up the entire five minutes, so I just kind of like to open it up and just ask kind of where we're at, looking to, you know, get a resolution or, you know, just kind of see where we're at with it.
Yeah, we took your information very seriously and we've had some conversation individually with each other about maybe a solution. And so we're working through some of that. I know you realize there's some challenges there.
Sure.
And so we need a little more time on that to be able to hopefully come to something that everybody could be happy with in that area.
Is there any kind of, and look, I understand like things can take time and I know I say, hey, this, you know, today I would like a resolution, I get it. I mean, there's, things take a lot more time than two weeks. And, you know, for us that live on that road, I mean, the problem was six years. And so that's, that's kind of, you know, our stance of where we were at. So just what kind of timeline, didn't have to be a date, like what kind of timeline do you think you all would need to have some sort of resolution to that?
I would hope within a month or less.
Okay.
Do you think that's fair?
I think that's workable, I think. We are working on it, Mr. Moody. The system, there's just some things that have to be kind of worked out. So I think a month would be a good timeframe.
I think the key thing on it, Melvin, is everybody that owns that road gives part of that road to the county so we can have a right of way so we can maintain off of that. I don't know if we have that yet or not, I think Shannon has some discussions with the folks out there.
We're not quite there yet.
I understand. So how would be, what would be the follow-up with that? So, do we want to do it at this, in this setting? Or that can be something we connect directly on?
Yeah, we can connect with you directly, would be fine. You're welcome back anytime, but we can connect with you in the interim as well.
Okay. No, it sounds great. I just want to say, hey, appreciate everything you're doing, appreciate the follow-up, appreciate the opportunity to speak with you, so thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, in the back. While she's coming up, I want to say, you can come on up and I'll just make one announcement. I know, I saw several people get here a little bit late and I understand it's hard to get here. We did have a couple of public hearing items on our agenda that we had public comments on. I know some of you missed that. So, and during our public comment section, you can talk about anything you want to talk about. So if you want to give input on either one of these public hearing items, we'll need to get you in this five-minute period, okay? So if there's anybody else that wants to speak, either favorably or against either one of these action items that will be taken toward the end of our agenda, we'll need to get you during this timeline because once we finish our public comments, there won't be any other time for someone to speak on any of these topics, okay? So just trying to give you all an opportunity to speak. Yes, ma'am, if you'll state your name.
Krista Brown.
Okay, thank you. Go right ahead.
I am Andy Brown's wife. He is not well right now. He has cancer in his lymph nodes and his liver. And right now, the mass is pushing on the exit, you know, for the toxins in the liver. So he has yellow jaundice and we're hoping the chemo will shrink that so that he'll be okay, for the meantime, anyway. What we're trying to do is rezone this area so that we can sell the house with the 1.25 acres. So we need to rezone it to residential from agricultural. And the gentleman that is, wants to buy the house is here. The thing, he also does not want the whole five acres with it. My point being, we have to sell the house so that we've moved into the apartment that's in our shop on the back of the property. And so we need to sell the house to pay for that and to pay off the equipment to take care of the land and the cows. We also, we're not a business of any kind. We just, you know, have cattle for us to eat, beef, and to sell only the calves that we need to pay the property tax and to put back into the feed, like hay and things. But I'm not able to work right now because I'm taking care of him. And we're not going to make it if we don't sell the house. And I have to be there to take care of him. And I didn't know if there was a reason why it wasn't rezoned. Because, or if we're supposed to have a variance, Andy was told that there were no longer variances, but at the last meeting, we realized that there were two other people, I believe, that had variances. So I'm not real for sure on what all to do, but if you have any... I just wanted to let you all know that we're not going to be asking for any more to be turned into residential or anything, just stay in there and taking care of everything.
Well, thank you for coming to speak.
I want to ask a question, please.
Yes, sir.
When you all went before the planning commission, and I'm assuming Mr. Hart, you were probably there, was the hardship mentioned and talked about then or the hardship on the family, was that brought into play or even talked about?
I'm looking at David and it was not.
Okay, that's, thank you. That's fine. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
Anyone else that wants to speak? I know you all are probably here on a zoning as well. If you would have liked to come at this time, ma'am, that would be fine. Please state your name. So you're here on the second one, correct?
Tina and Cameron Shaffey.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, it's not a tiny home community. This is our land. We are staying there to protect it. We had stuff there, got taken off by crackheads. That's just the way it is. Anything we put there, it was gone. We're staying there temporarily like that so we can remodel the building that's already there. Everybody wants to go against it, like we're going to just live like that. And if we live like that, it's all right because it's our land. That's the way I think. We have people lying on us saying they gave us an eviction notice. We have no account of eviction notice. We've been doing this for how many months?
Six, seven months.
Six, seven months, going to court every month. Sometimes I don't even know why I'm going to court. Everything is just, I don't understand why everybody is like this. It's just a temporary thing for us to protect our land so we can remodel a building. I mean, we don't bother nobody.
As we, as we came to your office too and talked about it, we don't want to live like that forever. These structures are going to become a part of our main house. They'll be added, there'll be no tiny home over there. And this kind of attempts, this gentleman, if you, I'm saying, I'm still here. Right now, I challenge, you see the idea of this gentleman, he don't even live there. This kind of attempts are, they don't do in with very good society. We are civilized people, as I already discussed, are giving me a fake eviction notice and then upon asking, "I need a copy," I never got a copy of that one.
We have nothing on writing from anything that's people's tried to do to us.
We are not. In this hardship, how much this society, how much they're going to throw the burden on our head is frustration. Right now, people are, people are just struggling to make a living. And everybody, nobody have, up to this time in six, seven months, nobody have told me that, I've been telling that I want to bring it up to the law. I want to abide by the law and I will do everything, whatever it takes to do it. Nobody talks about that, they just say eviction.
Off of our own land.
Throw them, even in the last meeting, some gentleman was talking, throwing them on the road. What is it? Are we living in Russia or China, some socialist place, or what is it? I fail to understand. Give us some time. Give me some time. Let me, I'm talking to different people, I'm talking to different even options for me to live even. Even moving to another house and thinking to do something with this land. But give me a little time, it's too much of push every time. We are, it's very, it's very simple. As I came to your office and I told, I got some stuff to start the remodeling. Next week, I was living in Atlanta, next week and I came and that all stuff was gone, seven, eight thousand bucks stuff. I parked car of my daughter over there for three days only BMW. only BMW. And after three days, it was on the bricks and somebody even take the catalytic converter underneath it. How can I stay away and take care of that? That was what, and I, over 700 points of my credit thing, I got denied by your bank of la fee. You can, I can prove you, I can give you all my, eh, paperwork regarding that thing. I couldn't get the, I don't have, nobody has right now, couple of, at least I don't, couple of hundred thousands on me to get everything done over there. So-
No, because we've already put everything that we had into it.
Let me make it good. Let me make it according to the thing, according to, to the rules and regulations. That is what I've been asking from day first. I don't like to live like that either. I came, I squeezed myself from four-bedroom house, lost all my business. Swear to God, I have to say, I had to sail to move over here for somebody's wish. I had to even sail my truck and I'm doing job right now, driving for somebody else. I'm doing my input. Don't, I don't think that it's very fair to push somebody that far against the law. Or bringing this kind of stuff and eviction and eviction and eviction on every stage.
I mean, we're just people.
You are-
Just like y'all are.
You are our representative. Give us a little time to make it right. And I promise it will be right. And it's not going to take a long time. I'm in a process of selling some stuff back home. It takes, even over there, it's very bad decision, worse than United States, way worse than the United States. Even then, I'm trying to sell that, those properties, transfer the money over here legally so that they do not get me for money laundering or something like that. It's a big amount. But up to that stage, I have to, I'm struggling. I'm cleaning this place cause as you show us the picture of this place. I invite anybody of you, come over there and tell me. It's clean from that. It's way far away from that position, which you show me the pictures in your office on your laptop. I clean everything over there. I'm working on things step by step, 14 hours of job every day. After that, 10 hours, I sleep only for six hours. Four hours, I'm working something out over there. I'm almost 58-years-old man. I'm in the edge of my energies too.
So- So let me ask a question. You mentioned a while ago about court. So y'all have been going to magistrate court-
Yeah.
Every month for how long roughly?
Almost five months.
Okay. And so that keeps getting continued. So I'm assuming, and tell me if I'm wrong, that the judge has been giving you another 30 days of time to get-
Yes.
Code infractions taken care of. Is that what I'm hearing?
To get a building permit.
To get a building permit, that is why we paid $900 to see you all. $900 in this time.
So the judge has been giving you time to get the building permit based off of the citations from code enforcement?
Just what, we don't have any code enforcement still. The only thing we were brought to the court, because these are for the tiny home, this is, these are the structures which are not, eh, which are sheds. They are not livable. And we gave them the paperwork that these are not sheds.
Yeah, they're cabins.
These are not the sheds. They are-
Every time we come to one of these things, we get educated. Cause they said, everybody's telling us, they have to be built on your land. Be built, built on the land. This, at last meeting, they don't have to be. I don't understand, I don't understand what's going on.
You say the last meeting, you're talking about at the planning commission meeting?
Every time, every time we encounter a new thing.
All right. Well, thank y'all for coming. We'll be going further into this later in our-
Thank you so much. Be my representative.
He has a question.
So you mentioned some time. Do you have any thoughts on maybe what kind of timeframe?
The thing is, I am gonna, I am in a more hurry than you because as a businessman, as a businessman-
Yes, sir.
I don't need stress.
Yes, sir.
My stress is built for my business. Swear to God, I couldn't take the stress. I ended business and got, went for the job because these things are getting me. Every time I receive a call from home, this thing is gone like that. This thing is gone like that.
If we could get the building permits and get professionals in there, it would go a whole lot faster. I can't tell you the timeline because of the money.
We, we will add these structures into our existing building. There'll be no tiny home. I don't like to live in that kind of slums. You know, it's a slum.
So what you're saying is you're going to take the storage buildings that you bought and, and build a house around them?
They're not storage buildings, they're cabins.
No, no, we have a house already over there.
Yeah, that says it's unlivable here.
That, that's right. But there's another building there.
There is another building that is on slabs, best, in best condition, a little bit, it needs a little bit maintenance of the roof and rest of it is perfectly okay.
It's an open floor plan. We had to build walls and, and stuff like that. That's it.
Can I ask a question too, please? So did y'all not, did you not consult with anybody before you started bringing those cabins in? See, because they're, you know-
No.
Generally speaking, that's the first step is to check with the jurisdiction, whoever, you know, wherever you are and find out what the rules are. That way you can stay in the guideline.
I read that tiny homes were permitted and I said, great, we'll do that. Cause we were looking for a camper to bring down there. And then the tiny home option, you know, approved. I said, well, that's great. We asked if we had to have permits to move it down there. They said no.
Who, who did you ask?
The people we, yeah.
People that sold them, not them. Have you had a septic permit for you there?
We have, already have a septic over there.
Do you have a septic permit for what you're using now?
No.
Okay.
But it is on seps- I mean, we had a, my son-in-law's licensed plumber and he done all that.
What, what about the electricity? Have they said electricity hooked on?
Yes, sir. They are sub, on sub panels.
Yeah. So they're sub-fed because I, I know they didn't come out and, and inspect them and stick them in their power. Now I know-
They're sub panels.
So y'all just sub-fed them out of existing power that you have.
Out of the house.
Out of the house, yes.
This says it's unlivable.
Right. But it still has power.
That could be an issue in itself, but. Okay, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
We'll resolve all the issues. That is not a big deal.
The what now?
We will resolve all these issues. I want it 100% within the limit of all you guys have the, created the limits to live in it. I don't want to live like something which is not good for town, for me or anybody else.
How many acres do y'all have there?
We have eight acres.
Eight acres.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Anyone else for public comments before we move forward on our agenda? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll move forward on our agenda. Okay, under our new business, I have a resolution that I'll read. Resolution R dash 028 dash 22, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, to set forth a timetable for the publication of agendas for regular scheduled commission, commissioner meetings. Whereas meetings of the Walker County Board of Commissioners are subject to an open meeting law act, which is codified in OCGA Section 50 dash 14 dash 1. And whereas OCGA Section 50 14 dash 1E1 of the open meeting law provides that an agenda shall be posted as far in advance of the meeting as reasonably possible and shall be posted at the minimum at sometime during the two-week period immediately prior to the meeting. And whereas the term as far in advance of meeting as reasonable possible is not further defined in the statute. And whereas the Board of Commissioners desires to further define the term as far in advance of the meeting as reasonable possible so as to provide the commissioners with ample time to review the proposed agenda and supporting documentation here within after referred to collectively as the agenda. As requested, any appropriate revisions to the agenda. And whereas the Board of Commissioners also desire to provide the public with time to review the agenda prior to the commissioners' meeting. And whereas the Board of Commissioners posts each agenda for the regular scheduled meeting upon the county government website for the public to view prior to the commissioners' meetings. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that a draft of the agenda shall be emailed to each district commissioner no earlier than Wednesday by the close of business, one week prior to the regular scheduled commissioners' meeting. And further resolved that the district commissioner shall submit any requests for revisions to the agenda to the board chairman no later than 10:00 AM on Friday, prior to each regular scheduled commissioners' meeting. And further resolved that the final agenda shall be posted on the county website no later than by, by Friday, close of business, prior to each of the regular scheduled commissioner meetings. And further resolved, the timetable set forth in the resolution is only applicable to the regular scheduled commissioner meetings. The timetable is not applicable to either specially called or emergency commissioner meetings. And further resolved that the resolution shall not prevent the agenda from being amended prior to or at the time of any commissioner meeting in accordance with the provisions of the open meeting law and Roberts Rule of Order. So adopted the 23rd day of June 2022.
Chairman, can I make a correction? I think when you were, you were reading that and talking about the email would, would come out, uh, you said no earlier than Wednesday in Texas, no later than Wednesday.
Okay, I'm sorry. Let me reread that.
That's the way I heard it. I could have heard it wrong. I'm sorry if I did.
I made that. Okay. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that a draft of the agenda shall be emailed to each district commissioner no later than Wednesday by the close of business, one week prior to the regular scheduled commissioner meeting. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments from the board on this resolution? Need additional comments? Okay, so call for a motion to approve Resolution R 28 dash 22 as presented.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. But Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Resolution is approved. Ananis. Okay. We have a res- Resolution R 29 dash 22, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a member of the Department of Family Children Services, DFAX, local county advisory board. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. And whereas OCGA 49 dash 3 dash 2 provides that the governing authority, uh, the reasonably to appoint members to the local county Department of Family Children Services Board and that said governing authority shall ensure all appointments are made from specific categories from within the community. And whereas one of the duties delegated to the chairman of the board is to appoint members to all committees of the board with the approval of the board. And whereas Chairman Whitfield submitted the following appointment to serve as a member of the Department of Family Children Services, DFAX, local county advisory board, Glenn Brown for a term beginning July 1, 2022 and ending on June 30th, 2027. Whereas pursuant to OCGA 49 3 dash 2, Glenn Brown is duly qualified to serve as a member of the DFAX local county advisory board and is agreeable to serve the people of Walker County in such capacity. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, uh, that the appointment of Glenn Brown is approved, so resolved and adopted the 23rd day of June 2022. Uh, I make this recommendation as a motion to the board and also to, uh, share with you that this is a recommendation from the DFAX director. This is someone that they would like to have on their board. And so they're asking that we appoint this person and I agree. I think Glenn would be a, a great fit for this board. And so at this time, I make the motion to approve Resolution R 29 22. So do we have a second to support that motion?
Second.
We have a second. But Commissioner Hart, any further discussions of the board on this resolution? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The resolution's approved. And Mr. Glenn Brown will be able to serve on this board. It's okay with everybody. Uh, this next resolution is basically identical to the first one with the exception of the name change. Renee Stapleton for the term, for the DFAX Board as well, for the term beginning July 1, 2022 and ending on June 30th, 2027. Uh, therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointment of Renee Stapleton is approved, resolved and adopted the 23rd day of June. Also, this one is a reappointment. So Ms. Renee has been serving in this capacity for some time and has contributed very well. And this also comes as a recommendation from the director of DFAX in requesting that we reappoint, uh, her to this position. So I'd like to make the motion to this board that we approve this request in Resolution R 30 dash 22. So do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. But Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. This resolution is approved. Appreciate both of these individuals serving in this capacity in their community. Okay, the next we have an approval of the Office of the Governor of Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, Council Sub Grant Award. Uh, project name is the Adult Felony Drug Court, uh, sub grant number J 23 dash 8 dash 032. Uh, these are, um, grants that we have been receiving, uh, since the drug court and mental health court has been in place. It's been a very, very successful program. Uh, there's a couple of members of the team here with us tonight. And, uh, these grants are for the judicial circuit, but we are their physical agent for the circuit. And so the, uh, matching funds come through the date fund program, correct? I believe? Oh, through the user fees and all. Okay. So there's not anything that's coming out of our general fund. There's not a line item in our general fund budget to support these. The federal funds of $312,335. The matching funds come from other sources, user fees, and also a date fund fee that is a, a fee that's charged in the court system of $42,591. So this grant period is from July 1, 2022 through the end of the, the federal physical period of June 30th, 2023. So this is a continuation to keep this program going. So is there any further questions of the board? All right. We have a motion to approve this sub grant award J 23 dash 8 dash 32.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Grant is approved to receive. Okay, that one there. Uh, the next one we have is for the mental health court, uh, which is also very similar. It's handled through our judicial superior court. We are also the physical agent on this one. This is also a, an annual grant that we receive. Federal funds of $141,529, matching funds of $19,299 for the total funding of this program of $160,828. Same grant, grant period of July 1, 2022 through the end of the physical year for the federal government of June 30th, 2023. And again, those matching funds are also funded through the date fund program and also the user fees. So this is very similar to the one we just approved. So any further discussion?
Chair, I do have one question. So the folks in-
The folks in Mental Health Court, I take it they are followed by psychiatry, mental health, et cetera?
Yes, they get counseling five times a week.
Five times a week, okay. And is noncompliance with that counseling, is that a reason to discontinue them from Mental Health Court?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? All right, we have a motion to approve this grant, J. 23-8-073.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. But Commissioner Blake Moore, any further discussion of the Board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this grant's also approved. Thank y'all for both being here tonight to field a couple of questions. Very good, very good questions. Okay, the next item we have is intergovernmental agreement. Intergovernmental agreement between Walker County, Georgia, and the City of Lookout Mountain, Georgia. This intergovernmental agreement entered into between Walker County, Georgia, County, a political subdivision of the State of Georgia, and the City of Lookout Mountain, Georgia, City, a municipal corporation of the State of Georgia. Whereas, the city desires to contract with the county for the county to serve as the city's local issuing authority, which is also known as the LIA, and to perform these services of an LIA set forth hereafter. And whereas, Walker County is a certified LIA within the meaning of the Official Code of Georgia annotated Section 127-310 and 127-8, and is willing to perform the services for the city set forth here and after. Now therefore, in consideration of the mutual conveyance and agreement set forth here within, the county and the city agree to the following. The term of this agreement shall begin at 12:01 a.m. on June 24, 2022, and shall expire at 11:59 p.m. on June 23, 2032, unless terminated earlier as provided here and after. Termination of agreement, either party may terminate this agreement, whether or without cause, by providing the other party with a minimum of 120-day advance written notice of termination. Either party may also terminate this agreement for cause due to the default of the other party by a nondefaulting party providing the defaulting party with written notice of the default and the failure of the defaulting party to cure the default within 10 business days of receipt of the notice of the default. Services to be provided by the county. At all times during the term of this agreement, the county shall remain as a certified LIA and shall provide the services as the agent for the city within the city's territorial limits. The city shall notify the county with advance written notice of the specific services that the county is to provide. The services that the county shall provide include stormwater and erosion, sedimentation control, associated services, studies, inspections, and the issuance of permits. Services to be provided by the city, the city is to pay the county for the services provided by the county based upon the county fee schedule as it exists at the time of services provided. The county may make reasonable adjustments to its fee schedule from time to time during the term of this agreement by providing the city with a minimum of 30 days advance written notice of said price increase. The city is to provide all required annual notices. Notices shall be given in writing to the other party at the address set forth below, delivery by email, hand delivery, or first class. Notice to the county, Walker County, Georgia, Attention, Commission Chairman, 101 South Duke Street, P.O. Box 445, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, with the email address of Commissioner at walkerga.us. Notice of the city, City of Lookout Mountain, Georgia, Attention, Mayor, 1214 Lula Lake Road, Lookout Mountain, Georgia, 30750, mayor@lookoutmtng.com. Number six, entire agreement, this agreement contains the entire agreement between the parties, no oral representation or parts of this agreement. This agreement may only be modified in writing that has been signed by both parties. It has a place for the signature page, and this has already been approved by the City Council and signed by Mayor David Bennett, and their clerk has attested this. This was a request by the city. They have a project in their city that requires these type of services. They do not have anyone in their city that is certified, so they don't want to hold this project up, and so they have requested that we provide this service for them. We provide some similar type services for some of our other jurisdictions, for inspections for building and things of that nature. If this ever become a problem for either jurisdictions, as it noted in number two, either party can terminate this with 120-day notice. One reason we felt that 120 days was a good number is there's something that's in the middle of a project, you wouldn't want to have a short notice and either party not have time to adjust or make other accommodations. So we felt like the 120 days, but then it does give a provision if a party is in default, 10-day notice can be given if something needs to be expedited. This is a 10-year agreement, but then again, with 120-day clause, it can really be dealt with on any four-month period for anyone that may come after us as Board members or as City Council members. Is there any questions, comments, concerns on this intergovernmental agreement?
So does Lookout Mountain do their other inspections, building inspection? They just dealt with the stormwater?
Yeah, so this is just to address those specific things.
Mainly the stormwater.
And then that way, we would handle the inspections and the issuance of the permits, and then they would pay the posted fees that we charge. But this gives us the authority for our staff members that would do these services to go into that other jurisdiction. Okay, any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Walker County and the City of Lookout Mountain?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. But Commissioner Askew, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this is approved. So this is one original here, and I think I've got a couple of other original documents here, if y'all just bear with me, sign these as well. Okay, we do have an approval of a purchase order, 221613, to LMI Tennessee LLC for $69,500 for an open-top trailer for the landfill, the funding to come from the 2020 splotch. So Mr. Payne Gilli, would you come forward, please, and give the Board an overview of your need and your research on this trailer, sir?
Thank you, Chairman.
Good evening, Commissioners. We use a trailer to haul chips to Alabama. It's burned as fuel when they power their plant there. And we also use a trailer to haul tires that we collect and that we accept to a disposal facility in Alabama. And it's a, the trailer that we use is a 1990s-style trailer. It's got a gate on the rear tailgate that was fabricated by one of the landfill crews several years ago. It's hinged at the top, kind of swings out at the bottom. And there's a little bit of structural fatigue showing, a little bit. So several years ago, we started looking for a trailer, and we came across this one, especially with splotch funds available now. And it's a 45-foot trailer, same length. It's got a walking floor, just like the one that we have has. It's got barn-style gates on it. It's heavy-duty aluminum that's reinforced every 12 inches with extruded aluminum sides. It also has a tarp. It's got LED lights, so it's highly visible. It's painted white, and it's at a good price. And during our conversations with the trucking company, we found out that this is actually the same style trailer that our tire recycler that we use for our tire amnesty days uses. So it's, you know, it's tough enough to do the job of hauling chips and hauling tires. And they'll deliver it to our facility. That's included in the price.
Timeline of delivery estimated?
It's on their factory yard right now in Alabama. It's just a matter of getting it up here, you know, within a week.
And what are the plans for the existing trailer you've got now? Are you going to hang on to it, or will it be?
Well, we can, and that's typically been the way we've done things when we bought new equipment. They will take a trade-in. They're interested in looking at it.
You have, not that's how, you have two trucks, so potentially, if you could find another driver, you might could haul a little more times.
We actually have, one of our operator level threes right now is actually studying for the CDL exam. He's got his, the first part completed. He just needs to actually take the road test.
So potentially, we could get rid of more moles.
Yes.
If we keep the trailer.
Right, and if we have the moles to get rid of, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Any other questions for Mr. Gilli?
So we just own one trailer now. This will be the second one that we own.
Yeah.
The trailer's our MSW, and it's not owned by the County Director.
Right, that's subcontractor of Republic Way.
So this is, wasn't Mr. Gilli's splotch plan for the splotched allocations? And so he's done a good job of researching this and making sure that this is what he needs, and like I say, I think they're up to at least three trips a week now, going to Alabama on the interstate part of that way, so we really need to have a good, safe trailer. Do we have a motion to approve purchase order, 2022-1613, in the amount of $69,500 to LMI Tennessee LLC?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. But Commissioner Askew, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the trailer purchase is approved.
I think we need to hold on my other one for a fire.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next is the action item on our public hearing items that we had. The first one we have is the Amy Brown request for partial rezon from A1 to R1 for property located at 456 McIntyre Road, Rock Springs, Georgia, 30739, tax mapping partial, number What is the Board's pleasure?
Can we get David to come up and explain both of these to us?
Yeah. So first one's McIntyre Road. Ms. Brown spoke earlier.
As I came before the Board, Mr. Brown, he did stay in the audience. He did stay in the audience, and Ms. Brown did speak. Now, there wasn't anything said about his health at that time.
Okay.
But, you know, we weren't sure. But what it is, the way this is set up, everything around this is A1, and they're requesting that 1.2. And they had already, is this not done, did you not get the deed?
No, not yet, not till, we can't do it without this being approved.
Well, but you can't get us to stamp the plat. It's showing in a Q public that it's already been deeded, 1.25 acres.
See, I don't know about.
That's what it says.
Yeah.
Yes. The city's office had deeds come through and has already divided this court out and assigned a new tax number, part of it, without it being rezoned. But the deeds, I'm assuming the deeds will hold it as not rezoned.
So the property that borders this property is all agricultural?
All A1.
We have a mast shows you.
Yeah, it should have been changed. It's in the package. Just towards the front of the pack. Well, I don't know.
So how did the planning and zoning board want to vote on it, David?
It was nine to one.
Nine to one, ten to one.
And they did not discuss variance due to health concerns?
That was not mentioned.
Not for sale, though.
No, it wouldn't go with it. The variance wouldn't go with the property. So however, right now, like I said, I'm looking at the larger map, I understand it is agricultural around it, but looking at the larger map, within probably what, a half a mile down is where the subdivision is, with half-acre lots, about 30 houses more. So I mean, it is zones agricultural, but it's not right at the heart of an agricultural practice. Farming, in other words, we've got a subdivision right within a half a mile of it.
You've got some A1, A1s down the road.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think so. Without a reason, I would like to make a motion that we approve the request.
Okay, Commissioner Blake Moore has made the motion to approve the request, which the request is for a rezon of the 1.25 acre partial from A1 to R1. So is there a second? We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I think based on the hardship issue, I would go with a second.
Okay, so we have a second. But Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion of this Board on this matter for this rezon from an A1 to R1? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one opposition, so three yeses, so the rezon is approved. tiny homes located at 2137 Dunwoody Road, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, map in partial David, would you like to come up again and give us some insight on this, please, sir?
This is a tough one. Codes has been involved in this particular one since around the end of November, 1st to December of last year. We showed the violations that was given. And I did talk to the property owners. I went down there and talked to them personally because I had an officer that was having some issues with their, talking to them, and what it was...
Because I've talked to some of the neighbors in that house, they're talking about rebuilding, has been abandoned for over nine years.
It hasn't been abandoned.
There hasn't been anybody living in it?
We cannot count on their first, their party to buy it. They've been offering me to buy it.
Okay, well, I've got.
They are, even they and the lady, I don't want to name call anybody, anybody's name. They've been, they are party, her mother is party over here. They want to buy this land, they asked me a couple of times. And I just told them, I said, I'm Mr. Custodian, this belongs, this is the inheritance, it's gonna pass on to the next generation. And secondly, as I, Mr. Brown, as I stated, it's not forever. I want to buy some time, give me some time. Either I will make it right, or I will just, because if I go to the next place, what I need to be doing, I have to buy another place to live. For that, I will have to get rid of this place. Even that one takes a long time. So I am not, as when you came to me, I told you I want to obey all the codes and every law over here. That is how I lived all my life.
I have a question for you, please.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm looking at three different copies of invoices where y'all purchased these buildings.
Yes.
And each one of them states clearly on here, please contact your local building inspector or homeowners association for any kind of, it, it tells you right here, right where you bought them, that you need to, you needed to look into it and, and get the permits, the proper permits. We do have a tiny house ordinance and there are some stipulations there. And, and all that could have, could have been explained very simply. And I just don't, it's hard for me to understand how you would buy three of them and it's, and it's, and it's on every one of the documents of, of where you're supposed to.
We don't have it right now with us, but we will give you the original documents which they gave us.
We've got it, there's a copy here.
I especially ask them. Because when we were coming back and forth over here, which are many people living here, I still see when I go on the road.
Well, I, I just wanted to open up, in some areas you see a lot of them there.
Yeah.
And, and in some areas, these, these storage type buildings are permissible. If, but in our ordinance, you know, it has to be, it, it has to be either, you know, and I think you got the fusible site built or either a modular type, you know, in other words, you can't come in on wheels. But, but these aren't, these aren't built to the specifications that are required for human habitation. He calls it, they call it a cabin. And you can call it a cabin, but, but they're not built to the, to the requirements for, for human habitation. Different, different, different components, insulation, structural members, things like that. I mean, there, it's, there's a, it's pretty clear in the, in the code book, we can, you know.
We did the installation myself. I did the installation.
Two large floors or two, I mean, it's wood, it's wood. I don't understand.
Well, well, and see, that's, that's the, just to help you clarify, that's, that's the problem is, is that you, you were sold it as a cabin, but it doesn't meet the requirements of, that Walker County has adopted for tiny houses. We, we did make adoption not long ago to allow for tiny houses because there are a lot of people that choose that.
That's what they told me when I bought it, that is what they told me.
That's right.
It is legal over here. You can, you can turn it, you can do everything. I, I can go over there in front of those people and they will confirm, this is the discussion we had. I, I'm just saying, we, I don't have to lie for this kind of thing because that is what I never made, I never did, get God into all these things. I'm an engineer myself, but I'm a chemical engineer. I didn't knew all about all these things.
I, I don't think by any means at all that you're lying, that you, that you come here and lying or fabricating anything.
My, my, my point is that I, that is a mistake. I accept it, that is a mistake. I should have done a little more research on it before giving it, that what is the law of the land? That is, that is my mistake. I admit it.
Mm-hmm.
I never denied that. I, I made that mistake. But when I knew I was already into it, know if there is a way to get it right, I promise I'm on your side, I will make it right. Or I will buy some time to see, to go through my other options.
Mr. Brown, on this, there's a conditional use variance that we're hearing tonight. There was also a variance heard at the planning and zoning commission for less than 300 distance, feet distance between tiny homes, is that correct?
Yeah, but the new, the new ordinance says there has to be 300 foot between any residential structure.
And that wasn't granted in the planning and zoning, was it?
No, no.
Okay.
So. Those requests were denied.
So just, so, so we're all on the same page. So the request for the variance to put tiny houses closer together was denied.
Correct.
They were never permitted to start with. They're not tiny houses, they're storage buildings.
Correct.
So, so that part I'm clear on. Now the house, is there one house on this property?
There is one house and there's.
And that's the house that y'all want to redo?
No, we're not wanting to redo the house, we're wanting to redo, the shop is on.
It's a garage.
It's a garage.
It's an old cinder block garage.
Yes, it is.
I mean.
It's a very good shape, too.
Well, I mean, there's, there's not to say, there's not any, any law that says you can't build a cinder block house. Okay, so, I mean, that, that's, that's not, but what I'm trying to understand is how many structures are on the property and what, what are all these violations now?
Right now, there's five.
Right, so the three, the three are they're placed there illegally. So that, so that, that's, that's an issue that has to be dealt with. They've, they've got to, those are gonna have to be removed because they're, they're placed illegally in an area that they're not allowed.
Right.
And that, that close, and that, and I'm assuming, I, I don't want, I don't want to assume anything, let me, let me just hold off there. But, but from what, what you're presenting to us is that those three, these, these three structures that clearly states that you need to check about permits, setbacks and all that, are, are they're placed illegally. And so that's, that's one, one issue. Now, what would it, where would we be from your office on issuing a permit to, to remodel or bring up a, a structure, whichever structure they choose, if it's a house or, or the, the building? We would have to abate the violations first.
Yes.
Is that correct? And then you would look at the possibility of issuing a permit for a, basically what would be a remodel because the structure's already, is already there.
Right, on that particular one, I'd ask for a home inspector, especially as long, as old as that garage is.
Mm-hmm. So you want a third party?
Third party, and then if you'll notice in here, how many people live there?
We've, we've got confidential personnel that can do it, we don't need a third party, we've got confidential.
Me, my wife and my mother-in-law.
What about the, the girls and the children? How many people?
They're three, two.
Huh?
They're three people, husband, wife and a child.
Okay, so there's six.
Right.
And there was never a septic tank approval?
So, that, that septic tank's been there. I don't understand what to do with that. It's been there for years.
Anytime.
And they said it was abandoned for nine years, so it had to be cleaned out. We got it, if it wasn't hooked up right, it would be smelling really bad.
It, it, the ordinance states.
It had to be approved.
What, what part of that, what, the reason that they, they state that is because back it, back in the day, let's, let's take it back a while, you know, we don't know when, I don't know when the structures were built, but it was common practice a lot of times to build homemade septic tanks out of cinder block that are not, that are not, you know, watertight or things leak into. So, so there's a reason that they have to, that environmental health, which is a state agency, it's not, that has nothing to do with us. The environmental health side is a state agency, not the county. But there's, that, that's be the reason that they, that have to be permitted or at least inspected.
Inspected.
To make sure that it was a legitimate system that was put in originally because kind of like you've, you've said, like on these, the, the cabins, you've had someone you know had come and hooked them up onto either a, what, they put in a septic system or did they?
No, the septic tank was there when we.
So they just got everything run to one tank?
They had one bathroom, I mean.
I, I.
But all three new structures go into the existing tank?
No, they, there's no facilities in the two, but.
Just trying to get, just trying to get your understanding of this.
Washer room, their laundry, all goes into the septic system.
From one of the new units.
Yes.
So people are living in two of them without water? And the power for all three of these comes off the panel?
I, I cannot tell you, sir.
Well, you, you, you told us it's, it's subfed from the.
It's subfed from.
From a house that's abandoned.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I, I, I hate it, but I, I just, from, from this very start, it seems like that we didn't get information and I, and I, I hope that any information that y'all asked for out of the county offices has been given to you. And, and I know that we deal with it every day, you know, our county offices deal with it every day, we issue permits every day. The misconception that this is a cabin, it is a misconception. It's, they're, they're not, it's not sold for human habitation, it's something, it could be, you know, like maybe a playhouse or something like that, I guess, but, you know, they're storage buildings and of course, and with the disclaimer on there, that even, that even kind of adds validity to that.
There's our, there's our.
You know what I'm saying? They've got the disclaimer on, clearly on the documents. And so, you know, I, I don't know. We've got several different issues that we would have to become.
Who actually did the electrical?
We have one person, he's a certified electrician, Billy Bob Jackson. He did all the electricity, William Bob Jackson.
What was his name again?
William Bob Jackson.
William Bob Jackson. Which if they're certified, they should know that they have to pull a permit, they would, they, you know, let's kind of.
Yeah, they should have known to pull, they should have known to pull the permit and also to have it inspected as part of that process. So that's something we need to also look into.
Just give me some time. Or, or just give it this company, give me some time. That is what I say.
Time, time, time.
Not currently, so currently.
Four, five months and these things will get removed from here, from the property. That's it.
But, but what were.
There is no more tiny homes there. Right now, I don't have any way to get these things down. That is what I say.
We're kind of far as button because, you know, people just.
So you're saying you're, you're willing to move them off the property?
We will, we will move it, just I need to borrow some time so that I can make my way out, I can figure out it's better for me to let this land go and buy another place. Even that transaction takes for five, six months right now. So give me that time, it will be your way.
How mu, and just to clarify now, and I was just kind of looking through your documents. So how long have we been, this time we've been dealing with this for, for, you said, when did it start?
Four, eight months.
And, but we're just now getting to the root of that we're out of compliance, or did you know that the tiny house, that those were not allowed eight months ago and you had, already had eight months? Or are you just now understanding that they're not allowed there?
I know, I understand.
We've been told so many different things.
It's, it's the first time I'm getting everything clearly pictured. It's the first time.
You can say, and you told us that you shouldn't be talking to us.
No, ma'am, I shouldn't be.
No, sir, don't.
Ma'am, I came down to you and I said you are living in an illegal structure.
And we asked you what to do.
And I gave, and I gave you the listings.
And you said.
I gave you the listings.
And you just listed a bunch of numbers.
That's what this is, ma'am, that's what this is. And you, you came to my office and asked.
We shouldn't have been talking, I shouldn't have been here talking to you.
Okay, okay, just hold on.
I'm not upset, sir.
Well, I don't have to call you out of order, okay? So I need you to just hold tight for us.
So my point is we're being asked to issue a conditional use variance for three tiny homes that are not tiny homes. They, they are not, for fire and safety purposes, they're not an inhabitable structure.
That's exactly right.
So I don't know how we could support it, so I'd make a motion that we support the planning commission and let David to work with them and give y'all a little bit of time, get cleaned up and moved out, but we can't.
We can't let you live in something that's not fit for human habitation, there's life safety things are not there. If we allow that, you, you understand?
On the same Dunwoody Road, people are living in a broken RV, forty, forty on the beside it for the last eight, nine months. You go to these, these, what you call it, they have this thing, this issue in the court, I've been seeing, I've been seeing that five, six times. There are four kids living over there.
Well, if you have addresses, I can assure you, I, Mr.
Then go to these, these trailer pods. People are living with the, the rooftop, put up on the roof. So it's okay, we are, I just want to buy some time, that's it. I know, I should have understood from the day first when everybody was telling, evict, evict and evict. I should have understood the day first which I talked to you about, that what is going on, actually. People are living here before us and they are still living in these buildings in this spoken county. I can show you at least 15 of them.
Well, if you'll email me the addresses, sir.
That is not why I want to find them.
Sir, you asked me a question, I want to answer it. If you'll email me the addresses, I'll email them to Mr. Brown and he will get into it.
I know, I'm gonna get it.
Because I work with Mr. Brown all the time with situations like this, on campus, and it doesn't take, happen overnight, but we're trying to protect people, we're not just trying to keep people out, it's, it's a health and safety issue and he's very well aware of it.
Just give some time and, well, that, that's anything to do with it.
Okay, the board's gonna make their decision now, so do we have a motion from the board on the action item that we have, which is for the request for three conditional use variance for the three tiny homes located at 2137 Dunwoody Road? Do we have a motion of the board?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we support the planning commission's recommendation. And we ask Mr. Brown to work with them on some time. I'm not saying some time to ever live in though, but, but David, if you develop a plan for them that works with their time schedule to get them out of those uninhabitable structures and start working on something that they can live in. And I'm not gonna put a figure on that amount of time, but it doesn't need to be six months, it needs to be, you know, you know, within a, two weeks, you need to have a plan what they're gonna do there to get them. I know, I should have understood from the day first when everybody was telling, evict, evict and evict. I should have understood the day first, which I talked to you about, that what is going on actually. People are living here before us and they are still living in these buildings in this spoken county. I can show you at least fifteen of them.
Well, if you'll email me the addresses, sir.
That is not why I want to find them.
You asked me a question, I want to answer it. If you'll email me the addresses, I'll email them to Mr. Brown and he will get into it. Because I work with Mr. Brown all the time with situations like this, on campus, and it doesn't take, happen overnight, but we're trying to protect people. We're not just trying to keep people out. It's a health and safety issue and he's very well aware of it.
Give some time and, well, that thing will be done.
Okay, the board's gonna make their decision now, so do we have a motion from the board on the action item that we have? Which is for the request for three conditional use variants for the three tiny homes located at twenty-one thirty-seven Dunwoody Road. Do we have a motion of the board?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we support the planning commission's recommendation. And we ask Mr. Brown to work with them on some time. I'm not saying some time to ever live in though, but, but David, if you develop a plan for them that works with their time schedule to get them out of those uninhabitable structures and start working on something that they can live in. And I'm not going to put a figure on that amount of time, but it doesn't need to be six months. It needs to be, you know, you know, within two weeks, you need to have a plan what they're going to do there to get them out of it.
So your motion is to deny the request?
Yes, that's correct. I'm sorry, that was wrong.
If I may just interpose, because I, I do represent the county in prosecuting ordinance violations. And I'm sorry, I did not bring the citations with me, but I see that the citation number or the case number here that was assigned by magistrate court was the fifteenth case of the year, and so I assume that the citation would have been issued in January. Do you happen to know if that was correct?
If I'm not mistaken, we made contact around, right after December and then we did sign with the court because.
Okay, so they received a citation to the best of my recollection in January. They were first required to appear in court in February. In the first, they had been before Judge Ice through the entire process, yes. The case has been continued since February, but they have been required and they have shown up in court each time. And basically Judge Ice has given them additional time for the very purpose of, you know, obtaining a permit or making, moving the structure. So I just want you, when you, if you make a decision regarding the time period, understand that this has been, they were signed in January, they appeared in court in February and it's been going on since then. And, you know, whatever y'all decide is what you decide, but I know when I get, they are scheduled to return back to court July eleventh at nine AM. It's ordered that they return and inform the court of the planning commission's decision. Of course, the planning commission decision was rendered last Thursday and they are here tonight, which is the proper timing sequence. So, you know, if you want me to convey to the judge any particular thoughts regarding the time period, but, but I think it would be helpful probably for the court and for me if, if you are going to extend any additional time to, you know, identify what that time is because reasonable to one person may not be reasonable to another. It's not as objective as saying you have X number of days. Days can be counted. Reasonableness is a matter of interpretation. But, I mean, that's, that's where we're at. Yes, they've been before us several times and it was, one time was that they had time to apply for a permit. They did apply for the permit. They have their hearing now. Now they're hearing before you this evening. And they will be back on July eleventh in front of Judge Ice.
Director, please.
Yes, sir.
I don't know what that time would look like. I understand that what they've been out of code for a while. And I understand they need to be somewhere safer, but I also know when we set a timeframe, when they take into consideration today's time, it's hard to find somewhere to go.
Does he have a suggestion?
I don't really have a suggestion, but I take that into consideration. I mean, what they got is better than living on the street, obviously, so.
What?
What do y'all feel like?
Well, I'll, I mean, I, I'll just be blunt about it, as I am a credential building inspector, have been for many years and still am in another jurisdiction. And as, and with those credentials that I have obtained and keep, I have a responsibility. And, and knowing that you're in a, staying in a situation that, is there, there's no smoke detectors, there's none of the life safety stuff that, that's, and that's what codes, what people tend to not understand about codes, building codes, are their life safety. It's not, it's all about life safety. That's what it's there for. And, and if, if I were making this decision in a jurisdiction where I was the building official, knowing that you're not, that it's not, I couldn't allow you to stay there. I would, I would feel better, and this is crazy, but I'd feel better if you, if you were, not, if you, if you said on the street, for lack of a better term. I don't mean that literally, but my point is for us to allow you to stay in something that we, that we know is not prepared for life safety. If you get over there and the thing burns down around you, then, you know, I mean, so you have to understand that. You just have to understand that. And I, I, I'm willing to work with these guys. We're, I think we're all willing to try to help, but the conditional use variance, I don't see how we can do that on the, on the structure. And, and if you can work with Mr. Brown and y'all come up with a timeframe that's feasible for everybody to get those removed and that's abate that violation, then you can, then you can come and, and look about getting a building permit to start. So it may be, it may be that you need to sell those.
Please, we, the thing is we, I told you, after the specific time, nobody will be living in these buildings. That is what your problem is.
Tell them that.
We should not be living in those.
It's their own sake, right?
Sitting over there is not your problem, living with us living in there is the problem.
That's, that's what, that's what I have as the main problem. Not, not to say that they're not permitted in their illegal structures to start with because they're not permitted. That's the problem.
Yeah.
But we, so, but then we take it further.
Just give me some time, reasonable time. After that, nobody will be living in these buildings.
But do you have anywhere that y'all can stand?
No, we don't have anywhere we go. We got, we put everything we had in this. This is our land. This is our home.
I put fifty, sixty grands in it. I put fifty, sixty grands in it. That is all the cash I had. Right now, with the, with the economy and the job, I don't have. Right now, if you go and look for an apartment in your location, which is, according to business people, it's a remote town. They want you to pay three months rent in advance. Then they're gonna run your credit and everything. A reasonable place is around fifteen hundred dollars, say bedroom apartment. Five thousand dollars is right there. You have to pay in advance. Three months plus, when you move in, you're renting advance. This thing I cannot afford. That is why I'm trying to borrow some time. So then I can make my decision if I will have to sell this land. This one is, this land is sold, buildings are automatically moved out of it. And then I am buying another place.
I have, I have one last question for you, okay? Can you tell me why this has continued for eight months and we've not, and we've not attempted to evade the violation yet?
I, my grounds of my understanding was wrong.
For eight months?
I was coming here. If I knew that I'm not gonna be granted any of these variants, why would I spend nine hundred dollars in this topic on me? Nine hundred bucks is a lot of amount right now.
Sure it is, but to assume that you're, that you, that you pay for it and it's gonna be automatically granted, that's not reasonable to me. That's just not buying your way in.
When you look into it from my perspective, you are absolutely right. Whatever you are saying, you are on a very firm ground. I accept that. But when you look, when you put your feet in my shoes.
Yes, sir.
I see people living in there and I was hopeful that I will find out the way. That is where I spent nine hundred bucks. Now I understand it. This thing is not feasible. I just want, you are all my representatives. I just want you to give me a le- reasonable time to make my arrangement. I have an eighty-two years old diabetic lady. She is sick. She needs, that is why I came here. I didn't want it to, business people, when your business is settled in one place, they don't wanna leave that place. I did. Only, I came to this town for that already. I had enough, this, this place is owned by us for a long time. But I never wanted to move because my, my business was okay. Look at this, I'm done.
Okay, so I'll think, I'll reword my motion, counsel, so. I'm gonna make a motion that we support the planning and zoning's recommendation to deny this. Because they've also denied a variance for having them closer to three hundred feet. And I would ask that the court system, at the next court date, set a timeline for these people to correct.
I think that's reasonable. It's been, it is, it's been, and it's been ongoing and I think, does that sound something to be reasonable now? They got a date you said for July the eleventh?
They've got a court date for July eleventh and yes, you can defer to the judge in terms of the enforceability. You know, I was just, if you wanted to make a recommendation to the court of a specific date or if you wanted to defer that question to the court, you could do either of those two things. I just wanted to try to give the court, when I go back to the court on July eleventh, an understanding if you have a specific time period or recommendation, I would certainly forward that on.
Because what we're dealing here with tonight is, is a zoning issue. The courts is dealing with the enforcement of the, of the ordinance and the life safety aspect of it. And so the courts was just giving them time to see if they could obtain permitting and zoning. And then the courts would be the one of jurisdiction of what needs to take place on the violations of the ordinances.
Well, I'll say one more thing, as well as you know. We cannot issue a building permit to anyone until your septic system, as we've gone over several times, is approved to the state.
That's, that's very, that's very correct. And so that's just the rules and they've been in place for quite some time.
I accept everything you are saying.
So Brown, what's your motion?
My motion wants to support the planning and zoning commission and deny this. And ask that the court system set a timeline for them to get the corrections made. Sufficient, counsel?
Yes, sir.
The court system would deal with the ordinance issue. So we have a motion. Do we have a second to support that motion? Because the motion is to deny the zoning and variance request.
Which we, which we have to do with a.
So that's the action item that's on the table of the motion.
Second.
And then you've added the caveat of letting the court make the final decision.
Okay, so Mr. Blatmore made the second to the motion to deny the request, which is in the recommendation of the planning commission and that the court system will handle the, the ordinance item on the next court date. Any further discussion of the board? Our hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. These requests tonight have been denied.
Thank you so much, Lee, you're done.
Thank you. Sorry that y'all were missed, Liz.
Okay, at this time we have our agenda. Commissioner comments, so we'll start with Commissioner Blatmore.
Just appreciate everybody coming out. If I can do anything for you, please don't hesitate to reach out, call, text, or email. Please keep the mayor, Russell, and his family in your prayers as I lost his mother this past weekend. Thank you.
Mr. Askew?
You know, first of all, I love to see participation. Very thankful for you folks that have gotten up with interesting points and information for us. That helps us tremendously. Of course, I've been hammering on and I'm going to continue to hammer on supporting our local, all of our local farmers markets and local producers, especially where times are now. We need to really keep that in our forefront. And also, I'd like to reflect just a second on, on situations, just as this we've just heard, how important it is that we do our due diligence on the front end and we don't get hung out because it's terrible to have to make decisions when you want to help somebody. But when, you know, stuff like that, I mean, we just gotta, so I would encourage anybody to check with your local jurisdictions and look into it before you make decisions and spend money. And in that way, we don't, we don't get put in this situation. So thank you for your attendance. If you can be of any service, let me know.
Mr. Hart?
Yes, so I brought up something, I guess it was two weeks ago, about the award. ACCG granted our safety.
Yes.
Safety worth a hundred and seven thousand dollars, is that correct? So I think David's here tonight. He wasn't here last week. David's here. So what I would like to know is, I know you don't have it with you, maybe you do have something, but where, where, where's that money going back to? That's money that we had to really account for. The money goes back into our safety program in the county.
Yes.
So a hundred and seven thousand dollars, that buy a lot of earplugs and safety vests, so there's gotta be other way of gonna spend that to, to.
Yeah, we're gonna take and.
We can use it to abate some of the safety issues and instruct, I mean, you can use it, like I said, where you've got trip hazards or, you know, dilapidation, but you know, things like that. I think.
We have, the safety committee's done a phenomenal job of identifying different issues and prioritizing those. I was out at the landfill last week with Payne Gillie, identifying some things he wanted to show me that we want to use some of this money for to reinvest back into the safety at the landfill. So we want to try to utilize all of those funds to reinvest back into safety. And the safety committee's gonna be a big part of helping guide for that.
Yeah, yeah, because I want to make sure that the departments have input on that.
Oh, yes.
Because, because they're the one that got us that money with their good actions, okay. David, do you, would you come up here and give us just a, just a brief, and I, and when I say brief, well.
Briefed.
Oh, I don't have, you don't have to, I know you're, I know how to keep you brief. No, that's what I was interested in, is seeing what some of the things that y'all had, had ideas for that we can share. Maybe share some of this with the folks and let them see kind of what, what the safety, because it does give a good outline of multiple departments and buildings and. But, Mr. Chairman, you might want to share a little bit of that, just kind of overview that for the folks, if I've got it.
Yeah, there's, just to kind of give just a high overview, there's some thermal imaging for the sheriff's office, that some of their current thermal imaging. Imagers are over twenty-two years old and beyond repair. Our maintenance shop, this is one project we are moving forward with, is to replace all of the lighting in the shop, the LED lighting, so that is underway. Additional high visibility rain jackets and magnetic flags for the mowers for the road department. Additional five gallon coolers due to all the hot weather, make sure we keep our men hydrated and the associated products for those coolers is on here. Additional firefighter cameras, so when they go into smoke-filled rooms, it's something that's been identified. We have some of those and we got a grant on some back about three, four years ago, but to have more of those would be good. There's also animal care equipment for additional handling of animals, catch poles, gloves and so forth. Landfield, some of the stuff we were, we were looking at there. And then also anti-slip stairs, different things. So these are things that the safety committee and the ideas that they've been pulling together and kind of associating a dollar value of what it would, would take for those projects.
Yeah, well, that's good.
They've done a good job.
That's good. And just David, you and Becky and all the ones on the safety committee, I know Robert Stoss kind of knows meetings a lot. That's, that's a great thing that we did and that y'all did and I'm glad to see it and I go back into the, back to the employees. That's good. Awesome. Thank y'all for your work.
Thanks, sir. And yes, Friday I had a conversation with Ms. Wooden, Mr. Brown, and they did some brainstorming. Think they came up with some great ideas, talking to our department heads, the employees, getting some input. And I think there's some, some great ideas. So y'all did a wonderful job.
Absolutely.
Really did. And I'm excited about that. I think it will certainly improve the safety in all of our departments. So, so good job, y'all. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I appreciate all the participation. I want to say thank you to the county employees who do a wonderful job, road department, other departments working out in the heat. Y'all have stepped up to the plate and done a great job. So thank you very much for your service. Just want to tell everyone again, thanks for coming. And if I can be of any service to you, please reach out to me via email or phone. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Very good. Thank you for that. We do have some confusion, I think, every year during tax time. We do have, eh, some confusion, I think, every year during tax time, or when the assessment notices are mailed out, eh, because us being a bordering community to Tennessee, the way things are done in Tennessee are a little different when it comes to the, the taxing and notices and things, and so we get these questions on a, on an annual basis. Our tax assessor's office, they are regulated by the Department of Revenue, and they have very strict guidelines that they have to follow, or they become out of compliance. And when a, an assessor's office becomes out of a compliance, then there potentially could be a consent order issued by the Department of Revenue to get that, eh, operation in compliance with the evaluation of property. So it's not our assessor's intent to go out and overvaluate or undervalue property, their job is to make assessments based off of the market conditions, and we all know the last couple of years, we've had a lot of change in our market conditions across our community and across the state and the region in particular, so, I know a lot of times our assessor's office takes a lot of heat when they take and make an adjustment on an assessed value that increases the property, eh, but they have to have justification for that, they've got to be able to back and support that with the training and the certification that they go through, through the state, eh, state of Georgia, and they get audited and checked, and they have, eh, an annual report that the state does to make sure every, eh, tax assessor's office across the state is in compliance, and if they're not, then there's consequences to that. Also, in Georgia, all school districts have taxing authority, that's totally different in the state of Tennessee, eh, school districts in Tennessee do not have taxing authority, Georgia's route the opposite, and so even though your assessment notices, and then in October, your tax bills all come out on one bill, it says Walker County on the top, we are just billing for them, just for synergies of efficiency for the school system, we are not setting the school millage rate at these board meetings, nor does the city governments set the millage rate for the school systems unless, well, no, they don't at all, the school boards there as well do as well, as like in the city of Chickamauga, the school board of Chickamauga sets the millage rate for the schools, and then that information is transferred to the city for the city to bill those. So what this body here does is only sets the millage rate for the county MNO, the maintenance and operation of the county, and last year, this body here actually rolled back the taxes because of the increased valuations, and so we're in the midst of going through our budget now, and we will be working on this over the next, eh, two or three months to hit all of our deadlines, but I just wanted to point that out, eh, from a, from a standpoint of people just understanding that process, because I know it can be quite confusing, but this body here is only responsible for the, for the MNO of that millage rate, for the county operation, and not the school portion, so I just wanted to share that, and I know earlier comments, eh, was, was made that, of clarification that Mr. Hart made, you know, over a phone call, which helped as well, and so we're always happy to, to share information for clarification, so, thank you all here tonight, I appreciate everybody being here, eh, I know that we have at least one personnel item that we need to have an executive session for, was there anything additional other than a personnel?
Do you have anything from a legal standpoint?
Okay, I'd like to make the motion that, that we go into, eh, executive session for personnel, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, but Commissioner Askew, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, eh, we'll adjourn, hopefully this won't take us long, but, eh, for executive session. Okay, it is, eh, nine forty-five PM on Thursday, June twenty-third, we just ended our executive session, there's no further action of the board, eh, to come before us, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, gentlemen, we stand adjourned, thank you.